All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the December 16, 2019 Board of Education meeting. Donna, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Attia, Mr. Koch, Dr. Green, Ms. Hodges, Ms. Prusman, Ms. Pasley, Mr. Wright.
Here. If everyone would now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no recognitions tonight, is that right, Donna?
That's right.
All right, we have one person who signed up to speak. Jeff Leek, Mr. Leek. You get three.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. A lot of my questions have been answered in the work session, a lot more questions have arrived. I really liked Dr. Edgar bringing to the table our revenue, which is students, and how that may decline, or how that is projected to decline. I also liked Dr. Williams' presentation on workforce development, something that I don't feel has been focused on enough until recent years. So, a few of the comments and questions will be all over the place is, my thought and a lot of people around me, our product is a classroom environment. How we provide that, new facilities, repurposing facilities, that's our product. I'm curious, you know, how much money we lose because maybe that classroom environment is not as good as it could or should be. If I ask any teacher, if I ask any parent who's taken their children or thought about taking their children somewhere else, it becomes down to behavior in the classroom. And I know we're making steps to address that, that are we doing that fast enough and efficient? Also with facilities, and we use all these numbers, I haven't seen behavior put in there. So, you know, my question is, it's not like you can bake a cake twice as fast by doubling the heat. So what happens when we put all these students in these areas? We are different than Liberty, we are different than Park Hill. What's going to happen with that? So I just look at things different, and I know that's kind of a pest to some people. So I'll give you a couple of examples. I know Dr. Van Zyl spoke a couple of times about how our teachers are, have, I think, seven or eight or less contract days a year than other facilities. And I didn't believe him, so I went and looked it up, and I've looked a bunch of people's, you know, contract days up, and I found out he was, he was right. But I also found out that if you, if you took in the contracted minutes per day over the course of the year, and I'm kind of nerd like that, I figured it out, it's about the same. So, I just get involved in a lot of them kind of sets. One of the things on the ballot tonight or discussion is middle school basketball, and the costs were listed, but I didn't see a lot of benefits listed. And the way I look at things is, what are the benefits? How much, how much more revenue do we get because of attendance? Or because of student coming to our middle schools instead of staying in private school? Or not dropping out the four-year cost of that? So I look at more of these things as investments. As far as our school, our facilities, I like to see data, I like to see different plans. I'm curious, why are we not considering a three-high school plan of equal size? Or two-high school with maybe turning the Hilliards into an academy where students can go out and get all the better they're schooling out there? I don't know what's best when we factor in behavior and success. I do know that all the studies say smaller schools are more beneficial, and even lower cost per graduate. Those are government studies, so some people don't believe the government, but I think they put a little time into it. I don't know what it is, I just want to see all that data. And yes, I do know that three high schools would have different costs, but according to past studies, it looks as if two new high schools and repurposing one still comes in under one mega school or two new schools. That's just, that's what I have. Well, that's something that was prepared for us before. Yes, I counted verification of those things. But, again, we've got a lot of questions to ask, we've got a lot to answer. To me, I would like to see every scenario taken out. And I know it drives my wife crazy when we go look for a car, or a TV, or a refrigerator. I will investigate something to death. But I think with this much money on the line, and like I was saying, one real chance to get it right, I think that's something we need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Moving on to item four, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any changes? Hearing none. Call the vote, please, Donna.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Van Zyl.
My report will be brief, because, as you know, I was gone having my first grandbaby. I didn't have the baby, so, no, nothing miraculous there. So, a couple of things, we do know that we did have our first snow day today, and so at least we made it to almost Christmas for that to happen. And this is the week before our Christmas holiday, and so we'll be wrapping up this week before our students and staff have the opportunity to take a break and move forward. But we also have a couple of other items coming before you in the not-too-distant future when we start taking a look at calendars, insurance, and those types of things. So, not only do you have the big things going on with the meeting that we had earlier, but we have daily operations and planning for next year. All those things are continuing to move forward. So hopefully everybody has a Merry Christmas, and our staff and our students have a well-deserved break, and they come back for the new year ready to knock it out of the park for the second half of the year. Any questions for me on anything?
Thank you, Dr. Van Zyl. Moving on to item 5B, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Williams.
My report is brief as well tonight. I've forwarded you copies of the strategic plan before, that was incomplete at that time. The draft is now complete. I have gotten the goals, objectives, and measures from all of the departments, so I'm going to pass that around. I would ask that you take a look at that, send me any feedback, particularly on the objectives and the rationale, not so much on the measures. We are looking at those first internally. And then, after the first of the year, as you've heard me say before, we are going to be gathering input from other groups and folks from our staff. So, please take a look at this and send me any feedback. And that would conclude my report for this evening. You've heard from me already.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Moving on to item six, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item seven, Personnel and Finance, 7A, Personnel Report. Dr. Kraus.
All right, thank you. I left supplemental report at each of your workstations. I don't believe there to be anything unusual on either the personnel report or the supplemental. Did anyone have any questions?
I make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
I am sorry, I need you seconded that.
Me.
Thank you. Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 7B, November Financials. Dr. Edgar.
Okay, in your packet of information, you'll see the financials. I don't think there's anything that is alarming, and the financials are in pretty good shape. One thing that I would like you to take a look at is the healthcare trust. You can see that that balances back up to, it shows 1.7 million on 11/26. It's actually closer to 2.4 million today. And so we're in good shape and heading in the right direction as far as that's concerned. So at this time, I would entertain any questions that you might have in regards to the financials?
I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 7C, November Bills.
Okay, also at your station, I did hand out the supplemental bills, so at this time I would entertain any questions that you might have in regards to the bills.
Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the November bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Dr. Edgar? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 7D, Budget Amendment.
Okay, one thing that I told you that I would bring to you tonight was a budget amendment, so you could start making plans towards staffing needs moving forward into the 2021 school year. And so with the budget report that you have in front of you, I just kind of wanted to make note of some of the things that this is built upon. You can see that the surplus is 495, 371, 96. And that also has approximately $3 million built into the expenditure side, which we had talked about before in regards to early learning and those types of things. And you can use those towards salary increases. And we'll kind of talk about that, we'll kind of talk about it twofold. Just some of the increases that were added in Fund I, $50,000 for Hilliard Chemical, that was what you approved the last month. And Mr. Silcot talked about the new equipment. $5,600 for Lafayette Speech and Debate. $1,500 for CHS SRO, and $78,000 for Launch Virtual Courses. In Fund II, $18,000 payout for retirees. $42,000 title salary moving to local, and $70,000 for an elementary principal. In Fund IV, $400,000 for Converge One Cabling, and $80,000 for an e-finance upgrade. And so all those additions are included in this budget amendment. And so with that being said, I said it's kind of twofold. I just kind of wanted, we did a predictor on what the fund balance would be at the end of the year. With these numbers built in, what, right now, your fund balance would be 28.06, which would allow you to entertain possibly talking about salaries earlier than you normally do. So at this time, I would entertain any questions that you might have in regards to the budget amendment and the fund balance report.
Just to be clear, when you're talking salaries, you're talking another salary increase for the staff?
Yes, well, or, you know, moving everybody over and down, just $1.2 million is going to be approximately what you were looking at before. But like I said, you do have about $3 million to take a look at there.
Or we might be talking about adding positions.
Yes, what, the same information that Dr. Williams just presented to you. So I think a lot of that stuff, there was a lot of information that was given to you tonight, so I think you kind of need to take time to prioritize that. But there are some opportunities there for you to do that.
Don't forget to go back to the work session that we had on behaviors and academics, because there were some possible next steps or items that were included in that as well. And so if some of those seem to ring a little more true to you, our academic services folks will take a look at that as well, and we can put some numbers to some of those. As you know, any, any position that you add becomes a reoccurring cost. And so anything you spend now, you know you're spending next year unless you reduce it, and then some, because there's normally an increase. But at the minimum, you remember from the levy, steps and lanes were part of every year that that levy was there. So this is, in addition, either an increase or positions, as was mentioned.
Yeah, that's a good clarification to Mr. Wright's question. That was built in, so you're talking, this is on top of that.
Okay, thank you. So we have some discussions through United. I mean, at some point, I'd like to get some feedback from the, from the teachers and the staff, especially to say, look, if we have a choice and we can invest that money, we can have another 1% raise, for example, what would that look like in the budget? Or would they rather see new positions added to decrease the class sizes, and what would that look like? Is that kind of what we're talking about, or a hybrid of those two?
Yeah, I think so. And then you're also going to have to take into consideration, you know, the, a lot of the things that they're wanting to add are resources, and obviously it's a reoccurring cost. So you're going to have to look at downsizing your, taking care of some of those positions through attrition. So, you know, let's say you had six sections of first grade, and, and you see that building's going to go down. So there's going to be some decisions that are going to have to be made with academic services and, and the business office to take some things away at the same time as adding things.
Well, and I know at our last United meeting, we talked about this, just briefly, you know, adding to the base or doing that increase like we did last year, or do we want to focus on? Because Dr. Kraus had put together that spreadsheet and basically did the comparisons of us and our, you know, our different school districts that are like, that we compare to. At the bottom end, we're pretty close or doing better. That's kind of that middle and that upper range that we really need to do more work on. So that's probably a discussion we need to have, too, places to be adjusted.
Yeah, and I think that that was one of the reasons I wanted to bring that information to you tonight, because it does give you three or four months to take a look at that. You normally don't make those types of decisions till at least March anyway, so now you have a couple of months to...
So are you saying that the $3 million that we had earmarked for early childhood were no longer earmarking for early childhood?
It's there for early childhood, if you want to use it for early childhood. I don't necessarily think we're going to, to need it. I think it, with the negotiations that we're in right now, I think a million would be plenty for early childhood, out of this budget.
I make a motion to accept the amended budget as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Moving on to action items, 8A, Summer Journeys Pay Rate.
Dr. Norm, excuse me, Dr. Norman has brought the contract to you and the timeframe for summer school in the last two months. Tonight you have in front of you the K-8 Summer Journeys pay rates. You'll notice that there's an increase in the 2020 pay rates over the 2019 pay rates. Also, a reminder, we did incorporate recess and 30 minutes of planning time for K-8 teachers.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please, Donna.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Paz, Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. 8B, Power School e-finance Upgrade.
Okay, actually, we had just discussed in the budget amendment, we added the upgrade to e-finance in there. We would like to skip three upgrades and get to 2019. So what that entails is that we'll be moving the software forward, and we're also going to have the server hosted by Power School or in cloud rather than be onsite. So it'll take a little bit, some of the pressures off of TMC, where they can focus on other things rather than taking care of e-finance. And we think that if things go down, it'll be a quicker reaction time, or quicker time for us to put that back up. So that, that is built in, and so I would recommend that we approve the upgrades to e-finance.
I make a motion to approve and say hallelujah.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. 8C, Centos Agreement.
Okay, our current service provider for our fire extinguisher inspections is Centos. Their current proposal is estimated at $10,000. You can see that with your attachment, so I would recommend that we continue that with Centos. One thing that Mr. Silcot wanted me to let you guys know is that he will be bidding this the next time around. It did go up. But we, the fire inspector was in, and we, this is kind of timely for us, so we needed to go ahead and put it on the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 8D, Purchase Refrigerated Box Truck.
Okay, the box truck that we haul all of our refrigeration needs across the district. You can see we have two bids, one from Summit Truck Group of 110-919, and one from Westfall GMC at 108-457-25. I'd recommend we purchase the truck from Westfall's, and it is built in the budget.
I make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 8D, Installation Upgrades of Electrical Circuits.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we are recommending that we accept the bid from Miljavek for $18,986.81 to do some electrical upgrades in our network closets. We did some of those improvements last year. We're wanting to complete that work this year, so that we have a dedicated circuit in each network closet, so that we can have an uninterrupted power supply to back up our network closets.
Was this already in the budget?
It was.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 8F, Clinical Student Agreement.
This is just an agreement for the Diagnostic Medical Sonography Program, I guess is the right way to say that, at Hilliard Technical. This is a new agreement with Shenandoah Medical Center. So this is something, we're just expanding just a touch.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Attia?
Yes.
Mr. Koch?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Prusman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries 7-0. Item 8G, Joan Embry's Trust Scholarship.
All right, the business office was in contact with US Bank, and it was found that the money should be used towards scholarships. If you look at your attachment, we received a check, I told you last month, I think, for $180,000, $188,000 from TTSA, UA, and anyway, we need to decide what we want to do with this. I know that with other scholarships, most of those are within the foundation. We do have one that's within the school district. One thing that I would recommend, if we leave it within the school district, that possibly some board members create a scholarship committee that could take a look at that, and we could get with the principals at each one of the high schools and kind of decide how to go about that. So I guess what we're approving tonight is just to accept the check of $188,000, but I do think we need to figure out how to disseminate that, because I don't want to be the person that says, I'll give $50,000 here, and...
Do you have the power to put it in the, in the rest of it?
Yeah, you can do, yeah, the board, but the board needs to do that. It's not anything I can do.
I had a question. This is, this is saying that we're receiving the remainder of this trust?
Mm-hmm.
And that this is a partial payment?
Yeah, there's $1,200 they're holding down.
And then there's still another $1,200 that we're supposed to get in mid-December?
Yes.
Why is that?
I don't know. Probably tax.
They said they have to put, do dividends and stuff, and that's what's been asked.
So is this something that was already set up, and this is that we're just now, because it's reached a certain threshold, that there's now funds to be able to...
It wasn't, no, it, it has not been set up. It was something that was part of a trust, and they're changing the avenue of the trust to give it to, for, for a scholarship. So the trust was set up, you know, as a trust, but not towards a scholarship, and now they're telling us that they want us to spend the rest of it for a scholarship.
So it's a new scholarship?
Yes.
So do we need to make a motion if we wanted to have it handled under the foundation?
Yes, you would. The, the reason that it's different is that the people who oversee the trust adjusted how they wanted the monies to be spent. So they, they're changing it. We're not changing it. We're just being directed by them to use it for scholarships. The only criteria is scholarships, there's no other...
Well, that's why I was going to say, is there any other donor benefit, or donor intent?
Because the donate, the scholarships that we currently have, it's my understanding is that X amount of dollars was contributed to the district, and then the interest off of those is what we make the scholarships with. And there's criteria for each one of the scholarships that we currently have.
This just looks like a donation and use it towards scholarships. I don't think it'll be a repeat. I don't know that we could direct to invest it and then do the interest to...
Well, it doesn't sound like they've had any direction at all.
It's not like our, our...
We read...
Kathy, I look at it, it's totally different.
Well, there's two ways to do it, from being on both the Missouri Western and the School District Foundation. You can do it, as Lori said, where you only spend the, the interest, but you can also spend interest and principal. It's up to the donor intent, whether they're going to renew the funding of that when it gets to a certain level, all kinds of stuff. So it really depends upon how it was set up and what the donor intent, and that's why I was asking, unless you have more here, then I think there's a lot of flexibility So it really depends upon how it was set up and what the donor intent, and that's why I was asking, unless you have more here, then I think there's a lot of flexibility on, on what we want to do.
And Katie had a phone conversation with them and they just said they wanted to go towards scholarships, period. I mean, we could, we can, we can reach out to them and if you want to just accept the check, we'll leave it in there as a, you know, as a scholarship for now. We can reach back out to them and, and tell them we need some more criteria, but I don't think they want criteria. I don't think they want to create anything.
It could be that they, we could just deposit it, like, uh, into the other ones that were school district ones and, and make their balances a little higher so there's more interest.
You could do those things, or I would, I would throw this out to you, and I haven't talked to our folks, don't forget we're looking at the possibility of a grow-your-own program. And so to have something that maybe could be a seed for that may not be a bad idea. Though now those scholarships would just be directed toward students or staff that were pursuing education benefits us without, with it being a little ambiguous is exactly what they want. They just want it to be a scholarship. That's something we could investigate, too. So I think Gabe just needs you to recommend accepting it and then direct us to come up with a couple of ideas for you on how you want to maybe use those.
I would make a motion that we accept it and that we investigate further.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
The only suggestion I'd have is to contact Stacy Helfrey at the foundation or Ben Byrd at the School District Foundation and talk to them about kind of what the portfolio is and if there's anything that we can use with that or not, um, on, on that end, um, that would supplement or, or enhance what we may already have.
Yeah, I, I don't think you just want to blow through it. I think that there's something you want to be, uh, proactive, similar to what I was talking about before on how some of these dollars could be utilized.
We want to set a criteria on what to do and how it's gonna be spent, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
We didn't have a motion.
Yep.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry that I missed it.
Larry made a second.
Yep. Lori made a motion to accept.
Bridgette, stop. Bridgette was distracting me. Sorry about that. Mr. Atia? Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Piersman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries seven oh. Item eight H, new dishwasher machine at Rubidoo.
Okay, the existing dish machine is approximately twenty years old at Rubidoo. Um, the budget for this item was twenty-five thousand. I would recommend that we accept the bid for, from Innovative Food Services at twenty-one thousand sixty dollars.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We need a good dishwashing machine. That is my discussion.
Thank you for that, Kathy. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Atia? Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Piersman? Ms. Pasley? Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries seven oh. Item eight I, Windows Seven computer upgrades.
Hello again. Um, so yes, we are recommending that we accept the bid from Maps for some computers. We had multiple bids come in and they were the lowest. We did ask them to do an upgrade on machines and even after the upgrade, they still were the lowest bid. We however did go with a different company, DMC, for the monitors and the brackets that we need because those are ones that we have already purchased for the district and we wanted to stay consistent with the monitors, um, that we had. And these are to upgrade Windows Seven devices, uh, that we need to have updated or upgraded before January, middle of January. And the ones that end up not being needed to update Windows Seven devices will be put in different labs, which was a budget item.
So are you upgrading to Seven or from Seven?
From Seven, to Ten.
To Ten.
Is this two different motions? Accept the bid for the Maps and then accept the bid for the brackets and monitors, or can we do it all at once?
You can do them all together.
I'll second Lori's motion there because she's been very anxious to...
But motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Atia?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Piersman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries seven oh. Moving on to item nine, information items. Nine A, ESCO RFP update.
I've had, uh, seven companies who have, uh, reached out to me in regards to the RFP for the ESCO. I had, uh, three of them come in and sit down with me specifically and, um, kind of ask specific questions. That's, uh, P One Group, Train, and Honeywell. And then, uh, we have had a phone conversation with Navitas. So, I, I really think that this process will be, um, very competitive and so I'm looking forward to moving this forward. We'll accept the RFPs on the twentieth and then we will, um, all choose some people to interview and then we'll put the committee together to, probably the finance committee or, or one of the committees together to do some interviews. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. Any questions in regards to that?
Dr. Edgar, I would mention one thing. As I've talked to local business people as this has become public, one thing that they have shared with me that they felt was important was, a lot of times these companies, and no offense to them, but they have their proprietary systems that are the greatest thing in the world until they're not, and then we're stuck with them. And so they suggested a more generic type system be installed in all of our buildings so that we are not tied in for five, ten, twenty years to one contractor and that any contractor can come in and work on it. And that there are generic systems that are out there that can work with that, can be computerized, digitized, and all of that stuff.
And I do think that that's one thing that, uh, has been the selling point in regards to a couple of the companies that I've talked to. I, I forgot to mention Snyder Electric, but, um, they will go out and get the, uh, best bang for our buck, not necessarily just shoving something down our throat as far as them being the salesmen. So, um, I did have a good conversation with the, the local company, P One Group, last week, um, and I don't know, um, we're gonna have some, we're gonna continue those conversations. So, hopefully we'll find a good partner. And that's one thing that I've said all along is that I'm looking for a partner. I'm not necessarily looking for somebody to come in and fix something in a one-stop shop. I would like for this to be a partnership going forward for five to ten years down the road, and so that's one piece that I've really been selling. And I think, um, throughout the interview process, that'll be important for the board members that are on there to, um, also kind of hit that, hit that home with the partnership because that's what we need, you know? We need somebody that we can reach out to and that we can trust. And so, um, I do think you'll have a, a good opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Moving on to nine B, technology RFP update.
Okay, I have, uh, heard back from, uh, four companies in regards to the technology audit and those are not due until January the thirteenth, I think, so, um, but I do think that'll also be competitive. Um, I don't know if we'll need interviews on this yet. It'll kind of depend on where we're at as far as the dollar amount. You know, if we're all over the place, then we might interview a couple of people. If not, if they're pretty competitive and they're close, I think we can just go with the recommended low bid or the, the bidder we see fit, so.
Any questions? Moving on, nine C, addition of seventh grade basketball.
Uh, yes, the middle school principals were asked to take a look at the addition of seventh grade basketball. They did have some concerns with doing that. Uh, I've listed those out there for you. Right now, we currently have eighth, A, and B only. Um, some of the other, most, many of the other schools we play also have seventh grade. They have seventh grade A and B. Many of them, some of them, uh, just have seventh A. So, they wanted to put those concerns out there for you as far as this, kind of informational. We did put some costs together as what it would look like if we were to add seventh grade A and B, uh, at this time. So it would cost approximately about sixty-five thousand dollars a year for us to add seventh grade A and B.
Questions?
Yeah, what, what are the admission costs involved in this also, right?
Well, everybody who participates would pay admission fee, yes. Just, that fee is thirty-five dollars, I believe, right now.
For middle school, it's thirty-five also?
I think, I think it's twenty-five for middle school.
I think it's twenty-five for middle school, thirty-five for high school.
Twenty-five for middle school.
Is that for the entire year per sport?
Yes. That, that's, that's a one-time fee that covers all sports.
Right, so if they played more than one sport, it's a one-time...
If they played another sport, they wouldn't have to pay for this also.
So how does the money, what's the general things that are in that sixty-five thousand you said?
Right there. I mean, there would be extra officials, there'd be added uniforms, there would be, uh, custodians. We would have to have some extended hours for custodians. Uh, transportation, there would be some addition for that. We'd probably have to either look at adding additional coaches or paying coaches additional to have extra teams also.
Thanks.
So you're looking at adding A and B for seventh grade and keeping A and B for eighth grade, correct?
If, if we did that, yes, this is what the additional cost would be.
It is informational, right?
This is informational for the board to do with it, what you would like.
And the, the misia fees, I believe they are thirty-five per student that we have to pay misia. We're only asking the, we're only asking the students to pay twenty-five, I think.
No, I think middle school is twenty-five and high school is thirty-five.
I believe middle school's admission fee is only twenty-five, though.
Okay, okay.
I can double-check on that for you.
Well, just, just to make my feelings clear, I, I do have concerns about students having to pay any fee for misia because it just, some students just cannot come up with the money. We could pay for all of it, we just can't pay for part of it. Yeah.
Is that true?
What's that?
We pay the misia fee for all. We can't pay for some, so it's either all or none?
Yes.
Is that true?
We, we, we pay a fee to misia for all of our, all of our students, for all of our activities.
I guess I'm confused. Are you talking about, uh, the school district? Do we charge for middle school sports? Is that what you're saying?
We do. There's a difference. We charge an activity fee. That's not necessarily a misia fee. Misia fee is what we pay to misia.
Okay.
We charge students an activity fee. We do do that in the district.
Do you always pay a misia fee regardless of if you have seventh or eighth grade?
Right.
So Larry, you're talking about the, the activity fee, right, that we charge kids?
Right.
I disagree.
Yeah, I, I know that there are...
I think we need to get rid of that as well.
Yeah. I know there are kids out there that do not sign up for activities because they do not have the money to pay the activity fee. That's simple. I know there are teachers that are taking care of that.
No, they're not.
So Doc, so Doc, so Dr. Edgar, can you look at as part of the budget moving forward, what that would look like moving forward if we remove those fees?
Yes, yeah, and I do think it's probably, and I understand why they could...
What about academic fees that we have? There are academic fees that kids that want to take classes that they can't take.
So I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not saying I'm advocating. I'm saying how much would it be for the high school and the middle school? Separate them out and we'll see what the total is.
I thought that, I thought that we could not pay those misia fees because if we pay those, then that somehow messes with the eligibility of these students.
I, I think you're getting two things confused. The activity fee we charge and the misia fee are not, not the same piece. We pay misia a fee for every activity we're involved in.
We are, we already pay the fee to misia to be involved. Then we as a district, and I think you had a discussion about activity fees a couple of years ago, you then charge all of your activities a fee, all of your students a fee to be involved in an activity. Those are by choice of the district. The misia fee, we have to pay for any activity that we choose to have as part of, of a misia-sponsored activity. That's a district fee. So what Gabe is saying, what Gabe is saying is get rid of the activity fee that you charge students to be involved in an activity. We still have to, we're still required to pay the misia fee. It's not a student fee. We don't take the student money and pay the misia fee. We pay the misia fee regardless. But what I would also say to Kathy's comment is if there are other items that you believe, uh, we need to take a look at as far as fees, I would tell you, um, well, you know, I just cut to the chase. If it's something that our students should be doing and have the opportunity to do that's not optional, then I don't know why we're necessarily charging a fee. Like, for example, when I took a woodworking class, I could build the birdhouse for free, but if I wanted to build the dining room table, I had to pay additional dollars because it costs above and beyond what was part of the budget. So if there are some of those things that we have as far as activities or classes that you see a fee being charged to that you're aware of, then I would provide a list of that to us and we can take a look at that as part of our budgeting process.
So that's something that the principals would have to create for us because I know that art classes have fees just for materials. Isn't that right, Mr. Simmons?
There, there's, there's, there should be a baseline of here's what the core curriculum is, in my opinion, that we as a district pay for. If you want to go in above and beyond that, like in Eric's class, if somebody wanted to do fifteen sculptures instead of two or three,
But they just pay an amount...
That he probably requires as part of his class, then they should be paying for that above and beyond what is built into his curriculum.
So a core amount should be covered, is what you're talking about?
That would be my opinion.
But we don't have that currently. That doesn't exist now.
I don't know. We'd have to take a look at that from an academic services side and probably a budget side as well. But if you know of some, if you know of some or believe that there's some, let us know and we can work on the other end of it.
Not all activities are sports. There are other activities, like debate, what we went through earlier with Dr. Williams, right, so debate, band.
Band, choir.
Choir, things like that, so.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff. You gotta buy the uniforms and all that stuff yourself and band. Know what you can do that, dude.
Bringing it back now to the agenda item, seventh grade basketball, so.
Somehow we got to...
I'm the one that asked this to be put on there because frankly, when I was in seventh grade at Savannah, way back when, we had seventh grade basketball, and the fact that a school district of our size has not had seventh grade basketball is astounding to me. It makes no sense to me at all. Um, I have received more phone calls about this in the last two months than I have about the high schools, believe it or not.
I believe it.
Okay? Believe it or not, okay? So that's astounding to me. So, and I shared this with Dr. Edgar, Dr. Van Zyl earlier today. I, I don't get the problem. The intent was to add opportunities, never to take away opportunities from kids. So I don't get why we can't add seventh grade A and B for boys and girls and keep eighth grade A and B. The schools can work out the, the gym time. They can work out all of these concerns. I think the cost is minimal to what we are gaining. I think Mr. Leek, uh, he, he made a good point when he said that. There, it's not just about the cost, but there's also some benefits here as to what we are doing. And I think the costs here are minimal for what they're doing. The schools can work out the, the, uh, the gym scheduling, the issues with the coaching, all that stuff, just like the high schools do. And, um, I, I don't really see the problem here, and I'm trying to figure out what the issue is somewhere. So, that's what I'd like to see.
I'm just bringing it as an informational item.
Go forward and then let the schools work it out because that's their job and the coaches and the principals and everybody, the A.D.s at the middle schools can work it out, just like everybody else.
So what I'm hearing you say, just so I'm, I'm clear, i- is that for this particular item, move it forward as an action item and then you'll be sending us other items that you would like for us to take a look at, similar to this, that we could take a look at as part of our budgeting process.
Would this be for this year or would this be for the next year?
It, actually, the season's over, I think, December twentieth. The end of this week, the season's over.
I guess why would we move this far when we have other questions about other things? Shouldn't we look at all of that together and then...
Sure, you could do that as well. You could say, "Add this to the list of things that we take a look at for next year." Good point. You could do that as well.
I think, Lori, that's a good point, and I think that, um, just my two cents, I think you need to look at middle school softball. I think you need to look at middle school wrestling. I think, you know, in order for your teams to be competitive at the high school level, you need some sort of feeder program and we have, um, a lack in that. And I don't know that I should say this out loud, but, uh, even middle school football probably should be something that should be taken a look at because, and you look at the, the competitiveness of our football teams this year, and I know that there's a lot of underlying factors out there in regards to concussions and those types of things. So I don't want to get involved in that. I'm strictly talking about it a competitive, as a competitive nature. If you want your teams to be, be competitive, you need to have successful middle school programs, period, in my opinion.
Seventh and eighth grade football at Savannah, too.
Along...
Many years ago.
Along with, uh, what was the league?
Maybe that's the problem. I got hit in the head too many times, Dr. Edgar.
So you're, you're just gonna send us a list. We'll add, we'll start the list with this and then you'll send us a list of items and we'll also start taking a look at what those other areas could be related to fees for students or additions for opportunities for students.
Or should you be reaching out to the school?
No, that's what we, that's what we'll be doing. Uh, yeah, it's not gonna be me coming up with the list. It's gonna be us reaching out to our folks, uh, to find out what... And I think we also have to take a look at comparables because if we have activities or events, it doesn't do us any good to be the only one that has it. So if other schools that we, in the surrounding area, can work cooperatively with, you know, I'd rather not bus all of our kids down to Kansas City if we can be playing seventh and eighth grade basketball with Savannah and, and Cameron and, you know, other places that we can be doing those things, so.
I want to make sure the message is that we are not just kicking this can down the road. We are taking...
Right.
We're expanding. We're making it make it easier.
So as I understand it, unless somebody tells me differently, the board wants to at least do this.
Yes.
And then we're looking at expanded opportunities. Dr. Edgar, my only last question would be, does the cost on here give you any concern from a budget standpoint?
No concern.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Segres. Moving on, item nine D, security entrances updates.
Oh, that's me, too.
Yeah, you too, Gabe, unless you want me to jump in.
Okay, the security entrance updates. Uh, we have thirteen of them completed and, uh, we're kind of moving on to, um, areas that are gonna become more challenging. But, uh, we are taking a look at Bodie, Mark Twain, and Hosea are our next three. And so I think I put that in actually my update this last week, so, um, uh, we're gonna move on those in the next couple of weeks. I think if you go out and take a look at, we have a proud product, um, at most of the districts and, or most of the schools, and things are, are going along quite well and, and actually the budget, um, we're spending a lot less money than I thought we'd be spending at this time. So, Bridget has some pictures up there on the screen and, and, um, so at this...
And this, and this is a component of the levy, remember the safety and security aspect? So this was, this is us doing what we said we were gonna be doing with those dollars. So, uh, we're moving through the process.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate the speed with which we're moving through it. We have not always done that since I've sat on the board.
It's gonna be interesting, um, after we get, after these three are completed. I know that Bodie probably won't be done until the summertime because there's a lot of stuff that are gonna, but it'll be interesting to see what, how we go forward with Central and Lafayette.
You can be a little slower after.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you did the easy ones first.
We did, make ourselves look good.
All right, moving on to nine E, district priorities. Number one, MTSS.
I don't really have a whole lot to add, uh, to this. I, I know that, uh, Chris and Michelle aren't able to be here tonight. They did, I think, share with you last time that they have, uh, community members now a part of that committee. I don't know if they met since the last board meeting. I don't know that they have. But, uh, they'll keep you updated as we move forward. Of course, we had the component, uh, as part of the work session with the behavioral academic side of things. They touched on it again there.
Moving on to, uh, number two, climate and culture.
Uh, we're still investigating a couple items in regard to substitute teachers, what we can do there for, uh, incentives, also incentivizing the staff for their attendance, and I think Marley and her team wrote to you about, what was it called on Mondays? Merry Mondays.
The last three Mondays might be a Merry Tuesday because it was a Sunday today.
Yeah. So, uh, hopefully you've been seeing that or hearing that. We're just trying to do some things to thank our folks. It's not anything huge, cookies and...
Popcorn and hot chocolate.
Popcorn, hot chocolate, just, just little things to thank them for, for what they've been doing and what they do for us.
Number three, long-range planning. We talked about that recently.
Uh, I think you've covered a lot of that in the work session before. Uh, you did have, I think, uh, a meeting where you had the community folks as a part of it and we just did a quick recap on facilities, also talked about early learning and Gabe touched on that. We are, uh, in, in the process of getting to some pretty serious negotiations in order to expand our, our early learning by hopefully at least a hundred and fifty students. Uh, we actually have a meeting later this week to try to get that a little more finalized and, and ready to go. Uh, and so th- those are kind of the big ticket items that are, that we're working on right now.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten, committee updates. Ten A, long-range planning. Dr. Green, I think Dr. Van Zyl just stole your thunder.
We have to approve his minutes.
He's got it all written down here.
Always, always happens that way. Um, yeah, so meetings are, the minutes are, are available there for review for the December third meeting. Good discussions, um, as Dr. Van Zyl mentioned, we, it was basically a discussion. We, we talked about, gave a master facility update. Uh, discussion on boundaries, rationale for it, that my priorities as we, as we take a look at, at redistricting. And then, you know, I would just underscore the importance of, um, moving forward with our early learning opportunities we're looking at. Exciting updates. I appreciate administration, the attention they put on that. So, I'll take a motion to accept.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Atia?
Yes.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Piersman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, motion carries six oh with one abstention. Ten B, policy committee. Lori?
Hi, Lori. We have finished our last group of, this has been a labor of love. I've been working this for over five years.
Round of applause.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes that were presented. So moved.
Second.
Got motion in a sec?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I'm thoroughly confused, thank you. You got that, Donna?
Yeah, I was good.
Okay, all right. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Atia?
Yeah.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Ms. Piersman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasley?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And you will see that the policies, uh, the groups are listed there, so I would make a motion that we approve those.